Eight acres.
Any other questions on that? If not, moving on to fifteen is a motion to approve the 2025 Align Worker Appreciation Day proclamation. That's in your agenda package. I'm gonna read it real fast. Whereas on April the tenth, twenty twenty-three, a resolution was passed by the United States Senate to recognize April eighteenth annually as National Lineman Lime Workers Appreciation Day. And whereas the profession of electrical line workers is steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition, and whereas line workers are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for public safety officials and to expedite the return of vital electrical power to our communities. Whereas these brave men and women work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, risking and sometimes losing their lives to keep electricity flowing. And whereas line workers are often faced with dangerous conditions far from their families as they work to construct and maintain energy infrastructure throughout the state of North Carolina and the United States. And whereas line workers must use their technical knowledge, physical strength, and ingenuity to achieve success in challenges they face every day. And whereas Wayne County thanks these skilled and heroic line workers, who brave hurricanes, ice storms, snowstorms, floods, and other natural disasters to maintain our community's energy grid. Now therefore be it resolved that Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as Line Worker Appreciation Day in Wayne County, adopted this day, the first of April, twenty twenty-four. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on to number sixteen is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Mills Track Ridge, Mills Track Ridge subdivision. Very great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mills Track Ridge is a preliminary plat, so this is the beginning of the process for subdivision. Nothing on the ground at this point for this. They are just getting started. Uh, there are eighteen proposed lots. This is out on Old Smithfield Road. Uh, the average lot size is about twenty-nine thousand or about thirty thousand square feet, so it's about seven tenths of an acre average lot size. This tract, um, is kind of back behind some existing road front lots. They left in those road front lots years ago a gap for an access. So they're using that gap for the, um, for the right-of-way, uh, to access the back part. The one who's developing this subdivision is the same one that did the road front lots as well, um, years ago. But, um, there are no flood zones on this property, um, and of course, planning board does recommend approval for this subdivision.
You're having a problem with drainage on that little lot?
Should move right off.
Alrighty, any questions on that? We'll move on to number seventeen is a motion to approve the final plat for Bartlett Farm subdivision.
Alright, Bartlett Farm, this is a final plat, so, um, all improvements have been complete. Uh, you saw this, I believe, last year as the preliminary plat. Um, there are ten lots, um, with this subdivision. There's one road front lot over on Antioch Road, um, which is to the left side of the screen. Um, and the rest are served by an internal access or a new cul-de-sac street. Uh, the average lot size in this subdivision is about one point four acres, um, so they are a little bit larger. Since this is a final plat, all the improvements are in. We do have a build-to-standards letter from DOT basically stating that the, the road does meet their minimum construction standards. And the planning board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
It's how many lots in it?
Uh, ten total.
I'm the chair.
Yes, sir.
And looking at lot seven, I'm not quite understanding how you can develop that if you've got a riparian buffer of fifty foot, which means you can't do anything in that area.
Right.
So how are you gonna cross that in order to?
The house is actually, um, gonna be in the front, um,
Really?
towards the cul-de-sac. That's a larger lot, so with this scale, it's a little misleading. It looks really small, but actually, there's enough space ahead of that in front of it for the home. And so that's what they're planning to build the home. And the septic is gonna be, um, back behind that riparian buffer, but there is a gap between the property line and the riparian buffer.
There is enough to put a line in.
Put a line in to do their septic back there and to, to access with the, you know, a small vehicle.
Okay.
That did come up at planning board as well, that same question.
Alright, good enough.
Barry, would these go to northwest or Fremont school?
These will actually go to, um,
They go to northeast.
Northeast.
It's out from Sawston, way Sawston and Best Gray Crossroads. Junior Peyton, I'm staying with us to the left, we'll get State to the left over there.
Any other questions on that one? If not, we'll go to eighteen is a motion to approve the final plat for Myra Branch, section four.
Yes, this is again another final plat, um, and so all the improvements with this one as well are in, are complete. Uh, this is another small subdivision. This is out on South Bestin Road, uh, and it is twelve lots. The average lot size here is about twenty thousand square feet, so about half an acre. Uh, we do have a build-to-standards letter from NC DOT, and, uh, planning board does recommend approval. This should be the last phase, um, of this subdivision.
Is that the one right up, kinda right behind the store? Is that?
Oh, no, this is further down. If you keep going, um, south, about probably about a mile south of the intersection.
That's the courthouse, what do you call it?
Yeah, close to where the, um, old road is that goes to courthouse.
Any questions on that one? Not, we go to number nineteen is a motion to approve the final plat for Berkeley Place, section one.
Alright, this is the last one. Oh, if you go to, um, oh no, this is, this is fine for right now. This is fine. Uh, this is the final plat for Berkeley Place, section one, um, and so all the improvements are complete. Um, and of course, this go extends out on, um, Truvine Road extends out into Green County. And so part of it's in Wayne County, part of it is in Green County. Average lot size for our side is about twenty-nine thousand square feet, so about seven tenths of an acre. We do have a build-to-standards letter for this subdivision from DOT. I did want to point out on this map, um, there, if you look at the bottom part of the map with the long lots, that's the part that extends over into, um, Green County. And you see there's a cul-de-sac there. Those lots are gonna be approved through Green County, and they're working through Green County for approval there. But that cul-de-sac is actually not there. It actually dead-ends, um, they didn't put a actually turn, a turnaround there at the end. It actually dead-ends. One concern is that if our emergency vehicles go to the end and go try to find a turnaround, they'll get to that long end and not have a way to turn around. So one concern is, or one thing is they could put in a temporary turnaround there. Cause what they're planning to do is extend that. They've actually bought the property just to the south in Green County, and they're gonna extend that stub out, um, and develop it. They've actually already started working with Green County to do that extension.
So that, but that goes to the right, correct? If you're going down the drive, going down the main road, that goes to the right back toward thirteen, correct?
It goes, yeah, back to the right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're saying they bought the property weird?
To the right, at the end of that cul-de-sac, further south, towards the thirteen.
Okay.
So the developers bought that and is gonna extend that. That's why they didn't put the cul-de-sac in, is they're gonna extend that street over and continue it on through, into Green County. So one thing is they could do a stub out. They actually have mentioned to me as another option is they have put up a gate, um, just to the, um, to the right, right there, that they're wanting to close and lock. So when you come up to the end of the street, that gate will be closed, so you can't go down there, and you can just use the end as a T-turnaround, um, for the emergency vehicles. So they're asking if that could be considered in lieu of doing a temporary turnaround since they're gonna be just extending the street anyway.
So are they gonna have, are they gonna do the lots at the same time they extend the, uh, drive into Green, the, the next property over? Or are they gonna, are they gonna develop the lots?
They're not, cause Green County, um, I'm talking to them, Green County's gonna require them to put in that turnaround if they develop their lots on the Green County side.
So how about, how about the fire hydrants and all that? Is that, is that within our, um, jurisdiction, or is it?
Uh, on this side, it's in, excuse me, Green County's. It's our water line, or it's the Wayne Water District's water line, so they had the fire hydrant seen, but, um, but in terms of.
But I guess our data, our specs?
Yeah.
Our specs in Green County's is gonna be the same?
Yeah, yeah, they're ours.
And it's, it's how many lots in Wayne County?
Wayne County has forty-nine lots.
That's about twenty-five four of those.
Can you pull up that, um, that map of the section one? And if we could blow that up in some way, what is all that right on the property line there? It looks like a... Yep, see all those da, 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 dashed lines or dotted lines?
That's the.
At the, at the bottom, across those lots, what, what is those for?
Way back.
Easements. Those are easements.
Easements for?
Yeah.
For septic.
Septic.
For septic?
Yeah, and drainage, yep.
So there's gonna be basically pump stations?
Yeah, to the, um,
To that back section where it's across, yeah.
Okay. Well, I saw it and I thought maybe that's what it was, but.
Yeah.
So where, where are those, uh, ending in? Do they have designated specifics drain field areas for each one of those?
Yeah, they have to.
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be the.
Fifty to twelve and fifty-three?
Long, yeah, fifty. Can't say sixty.
Back the other way. Yeah, there you go. Is that, is that it right? Do they keep running going by that?
So twelve and fifty-three, but they have specific, uh, places that are surveyed off for those drain fields for each one of those lots? That is a, I mean, generally that's how they've done that in the past.
Yeah, it usually shows the potty, the potty lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Potty lot, okay. I like that term. But, but I don't see that designated here.
Yeah, those are, um, that's a drainage, yeah, they're for drainage purposes.
But look on, I take it it's going either to lot fifty-three or lot twelve, and I don't see where they've designated specific areas for those drain fields.
Yeah, I actually think, I believe those are actually, um, those are actually drainage easements.
Oh, they're drainage.
Yeah, just for drainage. I don't believe they're for.
Not for septic, it's just drainage.
I think they ended up where they were able, where sixty-two, when one and sixty-two are kinda longer there at the front of the subdivision. I think they were able to work that out.
Kayla, stop, blow down that right there. Just blow that section up.
Those are, they should be drainage easements.
Oh, now, now roll it all the way, what's that say? Oh, to the right, right of?
Yes, um, yeah, one of them's a fifty-foot right-of-way. The other ones, yeah.
Now that, is that easement for the primary sewer or the backup?
I think it's just for drainage. I don't believe, yeah, there's, I don't believe there's gonna be any off-site septic.
Oh, okay.
I think it's drainage easements. They should follow them along.
Before you have them record this, clarify what type of easement that is.
Yeah, we'll clarify, yep.
On the map.
I think it's, I've drove, I've driven in there. I think it's a ditch right on the back, so I may be wrong.
I think it is. Okay, thank you.
But you say they bought the property to the, to the right. You know how many lots they got planned on putting in there?
I don't. It's not a huge property, um, there to the right. It didn't look like.
This Dolly Mazingo, is this part of their property?
Uh, Dolly Mazingo's not, but, yeah, further back.
Cause they're showing an easement on the Dolly Mazingo property. That would, that'd be a question too.
It's an, I think that's an existing easement.
I was noting that as well. It's like, uh, they're, they're kinda encroached onto Mazingo's property.
If they put it there existing, then it's, it's legit.
Yeah, it's exist, cause it's got a plaque cabinet where it's already recorded, for instance, existing.
Kayla, scroll that thing to the left on the screen.
We're just tearing this one apart.
Well, I just wanted to see.
That's a little confusing.
It is, especially with it being on two different maps.
Ruby Hicks.
Okay.
How wide is that even?
Fifteen foot. What?
Dolly Mazingo.
Yeah, fifteen foot right-of-way.
That's good.
It had just a right-of-way, eh?
G S, G S consultant.
They kinda, he'll scroll down.
You can't even borrow that money on that.
He keeps scrolling down. This is the second page.
It's the ditch that goes the whole way.
Keeps scrolling to the right.
Why they classify it as right-of-way?
That Ruby is the, uh, I believe that Ruby Hicks property, it circles around to the right, to the bottom. I think they bought part of that. So they didn't buy the Dolly Mazingo. I think it's part of that Hicks property.
Carroll Construction Homes. So they can't go beside, but there's a creek back there.
Right here, yeah.
Well, back in section one, there, there looked like a creek crossing the property. They, but you, they show that the ditch or the creek is all the way out of the property line. The property lines didn't extend to the center line.
There's a ditch at the end of it. At the end of that main road, there's a drainage at the end of it. It drains into the creek.
Right.
It duts, duts right off into the creek, cause I checked it, cause there's a whole lot of sediment going in. It was orange there one day.
Alrighty, any other questions on that?
So are you, uh, just really quick, are y'all comfortable with, or do y'all want the temporary turnaround since they're extending it, or is the close, or the?
Or the gate solution.
Solutions.
We need to have access for fire for, I mean, if they're, I mean, I don't have a problem with the, with the, the fence, the gate, if they're not gonna do any kind of, if everything will be built out before they start building.
Yeah, yeah. Green County has told me that they're not going to approve their side until they do have a turnaround on their end. So whether it's extended or they put it in, so they won't be doing anything in Green County until they get that resolved with them.
Oh, the gate's gonna just keep people from parking back there, so.
Yeah.
And it's off the bottom too. You can't see it at the back. Oh, you gotta go over it.
Alrighty, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you very. Uh, moving on to number twenty is a motion to award the RFE for exam room tables for a new DHHS facility to Atlantic Medical Solutions with appropriate budget amendment.
For the purchase of examining tables for the new DHHS facility. To enhance our facility and ensure compliance with updated standards, we solicited bids for twenty-four and twenty-seven examining tables. The bid process opened on February, February the fourth, and it closed on March twelfth. Vendors were allowed to submit up to three options that met the specifications outlined in the request for bids. A review committee, including health department staff and our procurement specialists evaluated the submissions. Atlantic Medical Solutions provided the lowest cost per table at nine thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars and thirty-two cent for twenty-seven tables. Their bid also meets the upcoming ADA regulation changes set for August twenty-sixth. Additionally, purchasing twenty-seven tables is more cost-effective as the price per table increases to nine thousand, eight thirty-seven eighty-three for twenty-four tables. The necessary funding is available in the current building construction budget. After thorough examination, the committee determined that Atlantic Medical Solutions submitted the lowest responsive responsible bid that met all specifications, including ADA compliance. We respectfully request the Board of Commissioners approve this bid and authorize any necessary budget amendments to complete this purchase. And there is a detailed cost analysis attached, if you would like to go through that.
I'm good. Any questions? Alrighty, that's it for consent. Uh, then we move on to new businesses. A motion to award the child support enforcement contract to Veritas HHS for three years, beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. Soggy County Attorney approved. And we can discuss that in a regular meeting if you'd like, unless you have any questions now. Then we have public comments, speaker section, county managers' report, Board of Commissioners Committee reports, closed session, and we do have closed session, and then we adjourn.
Is the, is the thing out there for people to sign up?
Yeah, it looks like it's out there. So we got closed session?
Hmm, and we can take care of some of it now.
Not sure, maybe we go into closed session four.
Uh, that'd be to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries, industries in the county, and to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege.
They try to beat their bodies to the ground.
I'm trying to...
We'll recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome to the April 1st, 2025 Agenda Meeting. I will now call the order. Imocation will be by Commissioner Foster.
I have asked Pastor Timothy Whitfield from Refuse Temple Church Outreach Mysteries to come and pray for us. He's one of the local pastors in my district, so.
Stand forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with humble hearts, grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. As we gather here for this meeting, we ask for your wisdom and your guidance in all of our decisions. Grant us chara- clarity of thought, clarity of patience in our discussions and understanding as we seek to represent the best interests of those we serve. May we be led by your spirit of cooperation, kindness, and integrity, always striving for fairness and justice in our work. Help us to remain mindful of the needs of every individual in our county and to make decisions that promote peace, prosperity, and the common good. Guide our hearts to work together in unity, respecting each other's opinions and ideas as we seek solutions that reflect your love and your care for all people. We ask these blessings for this meeting and our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Imocation will be by Commissioner Weems.
Pleasure to read. Our pleasure to read. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Crump?
Thank you. We'll move along to the approval of the minutes, and we need a motion to approve the March 18th, 2025 minutes. So.
Have a motion on the floor to approve March 18th meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And we move on to the discussion, adjustment, and approval of the agenda. I have one adjustment. Add a number 21 under the consent. It was established a public hearing for Project Istanbul on April the 22nd at 9:30 a.m. This will take place at the Maxwell Center on Wayne Memorial Drive.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the adjusted agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda spread.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to special presentations, we will include item number three is a presentation on E-Courts program by Judge Curtis Stackhouse.
We welcome him up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, Madam Chairwoman and gentlemen, and good morning, Commissioner Acock. Our thoughts and prayers of our family are with you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the accommodation. The reason why I'm going first, everyone, is because I'm in court here in about 15 minutes. So that's why I'm being treated differently than everybody, and so I appreciate it. It's also strange to see someone else in this chair, but I think that the county commission's in good hands moving forward, for sure. So my name is Curtis Stackhouse. I'm one of your six. Yesterday morning, it was five, and now it is six District Court Judges. We did have an appointment for Judge Heath's replacement yesterday. Sonya Davis, an attorney from Lenore County, who's been practicing for 20 years and is well-respected, was appointed, and so she will be our sixth District Court Judge of this district of Wayne, Lenore, and Green Counties moving forward. But I was appointed on, and I'm honored to be appointed, as your chief District Court Judge on January 1st of this year, which means a lot of things. Responsibility to schedule courts, to assign judges to those courts, magistrate supervision, among other things, and also a massive thing that our court system is going through right now across North Carolina, and our attorney is next. Maybe a decade ago, AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts, which is the administrative body that runs our state court system, and the Supreme Court at the time, decided that they would take a leap of faith and begin a process to modernize our case management system at our courthouses. Right now, for many years, if you've been to a courtroom, you've probably seen one of these. This is called a shuck, and it is basically a case file, a court, a court file. It is, and this is a criminal shuck, so these were apparently dismissed criminal charges from earlier last year. And if you look and see it closely, you see there's a lot of ink on it, a lot of court dates. That means it came in, someone created this file. Eventually, it touched many hands, probably hundreds of times, went in and out of court, and was eventually dismissed. That's a criminal case. Civil cases, such as this one, which is a child support case, look like this. They're also in paper form, have been for 50 years. This one is from 2012, and is ongoing, a child support matter. You can see it's about an inch thick, and it touches many hands. And if these somehow, you can't find them, or they disappear, which that doesn't happen often, okay? And if it does, it's not the clerk's fault usually, if the high clerk is watching this somewhere. But if there's no file, there's no, there's no case. And that was, that can be a problem sometimes, because if we don't know where a shuck is, all heck breaks loose, and everybody stops what they're doing and looks for that shuck. And God forbid, we have a situation that Chatham County had about 15 years ago or so, when their courthouse caught fire and was completely, their old, you know, traditional classic historic courthouse caught fire, and many, many, many cases, not every case, because they had an annex, but so many files were burned, and that's would be a disaster, frankly, for any legal system in any county. So 10 years ago, a massive amount of money was put aside to begin this process, and two years ago, Wake County was the first county through the wall. They transitioned to E-Courts back two years ago, and then Johnston County was the second in that district. And now we are amongst the eighth group of counties, 11 of us, our district of Wayne, Lenore, Green Counties, Pitt County, Wilson, and above, are transitioning to E-Courts on the big E-day, which is April 28th of 2025, which is now only 27 days away. And I guarantee, you may not know that yet, and I just talked to a few people who weren't aware of this E-Courts transition, but everyone who works at this courthouse knew about April 28th since it was announced in the fall of last year. It's been on our minds, we've been dreaming about it, we've been preparing, and this week, this month, it's all ramping up. We have trainings and preparation. I'm sure Clerk Whitfield can explain how much preparation the clerk's office has for this process. They have to scan all these files, literally scan them physically to get them ready. And so you may be wondering, well, why, you know, why is E-Courts besides transitioning from paper to a paperless process where there's no longer any paper? Why might that be useful for, you know, this state, which would be the first state to ever do this? Well, that means you don't have to come to the courthouse to look in a file. Everything that is public record would be available online directly for you. And for us at the courthouse, we have applications, every department, be it DA's office, clerk's office, probation office, child support office, judge's office, we all have computer applications that we've been given over the years by AOC, but they were all piecemeal. It wasn't an integrated system, one application for all. So every time there was a new application, there had to be some sort of process to try and link up that application with other applications that they needed information from. And sometimes it's not the best, most integrated situation that you need. And so this is a process to try and have one application for everyone. Again, 62 counties have already done it, and we've heard, I will say this, I am a judicial official, but I am somewhat of an advocate for this. So you may hear different opinions across the state. What I've heard from is that from the civil side, it's fantastic being able to file online from your office or from your home, new civil cases, small claims cases, those child support cases, those sort of things, has been fantastic. It limits the amount of people who come to the courthouse. Whenever someone walks into the clerk's office and needs to be helped, that takes a clerk from their chair of working to up to that person. And on the criminal side, where there's so much volume, that's where you have to be innovative. Volume can be a lot for E-Courts, but it's getting better. The first track of Wake County, they didn't know what they didn't know. They didn't know what they were supposed to do to prepare and learn the hard way of things you needed to do. Being in Track Eight, we've been able to learn from the other seven tracks and being told how to prepare ourselves. One way that we prepared is, and this was strongly encouraged by AOC, is to limit capacity in the very beginning, on April 28th, that week, those first two weeks, we have a very small amount of cases in our courts. If you walk by, you'll see not many people in court and be wondering, what's going on here? You know, where's everybody? It's because for the first eight weeks, the emphasis will not be on efficiency or moving cases, it'll be on learning how to do this. Because what you have is, I won't say there's any old dogs in this courthouse, but there are a lot of people that are used, such as myself, now 15 years in, that is very much used to the old process, and we're all going to be babies on April 28th. And the only way to really to learn is to get in there and jump in. They're going to train us, but we're looking forward to getting in court and having a lesser amount for the first eight weeks, just to, it steps up every few weeks and get better and better and learn our new tricks. So we will get behind initially because we're doing this. Just like in COVID, we had 13 weeks during COVID where nobody was here. We just came in and did first appearances from the jail, we didn't have court. We got backlogged like every county in the state did, but we eventually caught up. And so that's what we'll do too, once we get a handle on this, on this new E-Courts system. So you will see unusual activity over this next month. You'll see IT people you'd never seen before from AOC. They're going to be camped out in courtroom one. If you go by there, they're going to have a whole setup there, and the county was gracious to allow us to be able to do that. And they're going to help us learn how to do the system and how to be efficient. And so we're just, we're all just ready now to get to it, and it'll be here before we know it. And also just to the county courthouse, they've been very good about working with us, about getting hardware and adding new things to the courtroom, so we really appreciate what they've done for us as well. So I will answer as many questions as I can. We are training, the judges now, other judges are going to training tomorrow and Thursday in Greenville, so as to particular questions, I'm probably not ready to answer those, but if you have any other general questions about E-Courts, I'm happy to give it a shot.
Judge Stackhouse, the average citizen can go in and look at a file, is that what?
Yes.
Did I hear you say, well, how will they know the information, how to get into the system?
The, so to begin with, there's a system called Portal that any citizen can use, and any citizen would have access to any matter that's a public record, which is really basically anything but juvenile cases. Juvenile cases, there will be restricted access naturally. And so you sign up on the portal, and you can use the case number, if you have that, you can use the parties' names. It's a pretty robust search system. You can use a date range, if you're looking for a particular case with a name, you know, from a particular time period, and that'll pop up, and it'll be completely scanned in. Everything that's in that file will be completely scanned in. So that's, that is how it works. And I've heard wonderful stories about that when it comes to it. There was a judge sitting in DSS Court in New Hanover County, and issue came up during his DSS hearing about a domestic violence protective order that was in Durham County that set certain custody provisions, and he was able instantly to get on his computer and look it up within 15 seconds and get that information. Old way would have been to call that Durham County Clerk's Office, have them create a CD, have them scan the file, create a CD of that and send it, which means there would have been a continuance, which in DSS Court, those are very much frowned upon because you're dealing with children who are often displaced from their natural parents. You need to be fast. So that was, you know, that's a triumph when it comes to E-Courts. You can instantly get information from other counties just by pulling up, you know, and using the search engine to find that information.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Judge Stackhouse?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but how will this E-Courts affect our clerk's office? Will it affect any employment?
So that's a good question. E-Courts, again, because we're all learning new tricks, it's been a major transition for all those who've gone before us. And it is very clear that the clerk's office has most, or the lion's share of the burden of preparing for E-Courts and also being in court, helping manage the cases. And so have there been other districts that have had clerks that get frustrated and left or decided to move on? Yes. Have there been more clerks and other staff at other courthouses deciding that I've got my 30 years, and I'm not ready to learn a new system, and it's time to move on? Yes. But what they taught us, and what I believe is true, is if we all just exercise grace and patience with one, each other, and abide by what they tell us to do, such as this capacity limits order that's going to make sure that we only have 25 cases that first day, and no one gets overwhelmed, we learn together, then we hope that that won't be a problem. The clerks that we, this is my personal opinion, the clerks that we have in all three counties are fantastic and very good at what they do. And the criminal clerks that we have, if they can't do it, nobody can, because they're really. they're, they're really, really good at what they, they do. They know what's coming. We have good relationships with them as judges. All six, in my opinion, all six of the judges that we have are, are not cantankerous and are willing to be patient. And so I think we'll have success that way. Could there be a clerk or two that decides it's not for them? Potentially, yes, sir. But I'm hoping that won't happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think we're going to have to let Judge go because he, it's all.
I've got, I've got 15 more minutes. Thank you all and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I think looking government is just, it's such a service and see you all again, okay? And thank y'all for being accommodating as well.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All righty. Moving on to item number four is a motion to approve the 2025, 2025 Community College Month proclamation as presented by College President Dr. Patty Pfeifer and an update on Wayne Community College by her as well. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, it's always a joy to stand in front of you guys. Timmy, it's good to see you for the first time sitting in that chair. I do have a PowerPoint. I shall go ahead and pull that up. I can do that first because I have the proclamation on that at the, at the end. Thank you. Back it up. College. Yeah, I did bring a, a jump drive just in case. It's right there. There it is. Yep, got it. So as always, it's great to update you on the great things that are happening at Wayne Community College. I know I always update you on enrollment. Enrollment for the fall, we did well. Our curriculum was up a little over 5%. Our workforce continuing education was up 1.3%. And spring, we're looking good. Right now, we're up a little over 3%, almost 4%, 3.5%. Workforce continuing education, I can never report that until the end, just because they are constantly enrolling and finishing courses, short-term training. So I'll, next time, have the opportunity, I'll update you on that. But what I have been told and the data that I have looked at, we're doing well in short-term training. We do, since the last time that I spoke with you guys, we do have three new board members, Dr. Anthony Slater, Ms. Selena Worrell and Mr. Charles Brogdon. I think I shared with some of you, there has been changes in the legislature last year, how our board members are appointed. And we follow that process and we were able to get three new board members. They are already being very engaged in the activity at Wayne Community College. And so I'm very thankful to have these three new board members as part of our Board of Trustees. We did do some exciting things over the last few months. Some of you may know Dr. G. Herman Porter. He was prior president of Wayne Community College, from a long time ago. And how I know that is because when I was a student, I was actually a marshal at his inauguration when I was a nursing student, being part of Phi Theta Kappa. So it's been a very long time. But he has passed and his family wanted to honor his legacy at Wayne Community College. So we did dedicate the atrium in his honor. We also dedicated our boardroom to Mr. Keith Stewart. Many of you may know Keith Stewart. He was a pharmacist in Fremont, but he was also on our board for nearly 30 years. He served at Wayne Community College. So our boardroom is dedicated for Mr. Keith Stewart. Some of you also may know Kirk Keller, Forrest Kirk Keller. He was the, what I would call the life of the party. He was somebody that always brought excitement and humor and a large personality to Wayne Community College and this community. And so we dedicated our stage to Forrest Kirk Keller because he, he enjoyed being on that stage and we enjoyed having him on that stage. So he was a wonderful instructor. He has also passed and we have dedicated that stage to him. Just a few of the great things that happened. You know, our students do wonderful things. We had a student, he pictured there in the middle, his name is Alan Vargas. And he was a high school student who came through our C program, which was our pre-apprenticeship that we offered last summer for high school kids. He was a senior, he came through the C program. He was picked up at Mount Olive Pickle. So now he is a full-time student and, excuse me, a full-time employee of Mount Olive Pickle as well as a student at Wayne Community College in a registered apprenticeship with Mount Olive Pickle. That means that he is going to school tuition-free, be able to do that. He was recognized at the state level through apprenticeship NC as the outstanding registered pre-apprenticeship student. Well deserved and he's doing, understand, doing great things at Mount Olive Pickle. His hope is to finish with us and then go on to ECU to get his full-year degree. We also received a champion for attainment through My Future NC 2025 for the, the work that we did with the Reentry Council, the re-establishment of the Reentry Council. We're very proud of that. And I understand we'll have a proclamation later today about second chances. We have received a, well, it says here finalist, but since I did this PowerPoint and sent it on to Carol, we now know that we were a silver award winner of a Paragon Award for our, from our Office of Communications. They do a weekly newsletter for us, kind of the Bison Bulletin. And they just got back from New Orleans receiving that award. Very proud of their accomplishments. I put this slide in here because I wanted you to know that we do have a large impact. We do have a representative from the North Carolina Military Business Center. His name is Bill Simons, and he helps connect our local businesses with federal contracts. The latest data I have in 2023, almost $116 million worth of contracts were awarded to local businesses through federal contracts. So if you have an industry or business and that's something that you would look or aspire for a federal contract, we do have a contact person on our campus that could help with that. We like to partner with other colleges. You, you recognize this gentleman in this photo, Mr. Jeans, or Dr. Jean Smith. We did sign what's called an ISA or Institutional Service Agreement for Artificial Intelligence, which basically means we offer the artificial intelligence classes, but they offer the first year, the general education classes, et cetera, et cetera. We've done that with Brunswick Community College, we've done that with Wilson, and we've also done that with Johnston Community College. Basically means those colleges can advertise artificial intelligence, but don't have to have the instructor. The second year of that program, they are taking those classes at Wayne Community College. You're going to say, why didn't they do that? They're at the beach. Well, most of those classes, because it is artificial intelligence, are online. So they're able to do that. We've signed with Campbell University as a guaranteed admissions program. So students that want to go straight onto Campbell can be able to do that. We've also renewed our partnership with Fayetteville Technical Community College for funeral services. We have advertised funeral services for a long period of time. That obviously is a career that is not going to die out. I know. I'll, I'll never be a comedian, but nevertheless, we have had a program with Fayetteville Technical Community College for funeral services a long period of time and it was time to renew that. So we renewed that partnership. Again, they can take the first year of classes at Wayne Community College and their second year at Fayetteville Technical Community College. We have had the governor on our campus a couple of times. He came originally to announce the C program, which is a southeastern educational and economic development program or the pre-apprenticeship program we had for high school kids this summer. And then he came back near the end to see the accomplishments that our students had done. So we were just honored to have him on campus a couple of times. We are part of the Carolina Cyber Network. We received a grant from them for about $147,000 to put a new cybersecurity lab in. You are aware cybersecurity is a growing field. It is a high-paying field when people finish a cybersecurity degree. So we have been working with them for probably a couple of years now, and they've been very supportive of our students and our program for cybersecurity. This is really important. SACS or the Southern Association Commission Colleges. We are in the process for reaffirmation. That is a 10-year renewal of our regional accreditation for the college as a whole. We have submitted all the paperwork we need to submit, waiting for some feedback on that paperwork, and we will have a site visit in October of 2025. Once we get that site visit, we should know preliminarily in December what our status is, and it will be official in June of '26. I see no problems with that. If there's anything that needs to be addressed, we would address it. But I feel very comfortable about all the standards that we have addressed and submitted. And I, I know Mr. Herr would understand that process well. So we always want to support other community colleges, their faculty, staff and their students. We did a warmth for the West drive. You know, there were 14 community colleges in the West that were devastated by the recent hurricane, Helene, that we had. So we at Wayne Community College through the month of January collected warm weather items, coats, gloves, hot hands, even stuff for like diapers and that kind of stuff for infants. We were able to deliver that to Blue Ridge Community College and I think beginning of February. And they were very, very appreciative of the drive. Not only did our campus people do that, but we had some community churches that delivered to that drive too. So just want to thank everybody because that was helping their students, their faculty and their staff that had lost so much during that hurricane. Duke Energy recently just gave us $25,000. That is to support our applied tech programs. Y'all are aware that we have opened that site building. I think I have a slide for that in a minute, but that's going to support workforce development initiatives that we have on our campus. I don't know if you know, we've chased vendors in our, what was known as the Bison Bistro previously, but we have Bean Sweet at Wayne Community College. We are open to the public. So if you want to come out for breakfast or lunch Monday through Friday, please come to Wayne Community College. We'd love to have you at the campus. If anybody wants to be shown around the campus, we can, always somebody can do that. But just wanted to let you know that we are open to the public as well as our faculty, staff and students. So this is what I know you guys are all excited about, and that is our Center for Industrial Technology and Engineering. Long time coming. This building's been a long time coming, but we opened it for classes in January of this year. We will have an official ribbon cutting as soon as all the signage is up. We are waiting on the external signage for the donor who gave funds for that. But just, it's a beautiful building. It is a wonderful learning space for our students. It's going to allow for expansion of our programs within the applied tech area. Some other, just some projects, I'll let you read that, but we are in the design phase for an ag building that's going up. We're turning dirt right now for a truck driving and public safety driving pad. We're renovating some spaces that we already have. We'll be doing an expansion in our nursing area to increase admissions into our nursing program and just some infrastructure projects that, you know, there's always something you have to repair on a campus of that size. Wanted to let you know, we are in the planning phases for a new program, Construction Technologies. We do know that we are constantly building, especially in Wayne County and surrounding counties. So we're in the planning process for Construction Technologies. That will probably be February, or excuse me, fall of '26, that, that program would come on board, because there's just lots of steps that we have to go through for not only through SACS, but through our state approval office. And the reason I'm here, other than the update, April is National Community College Month. It is a time that we celebrate the over 1,000 community colleges that we have in this nation and the hundreds of thousands or probably millions of students that come through community colleges that are able to earn either short-term certificates or curriculum certificates, degrees and diplomas. So we always want to celebrate the success of our students and graduation is right around the corner for us. We will have graduation on May 13th to celebrate the success of our students, as well the plethora of pinnings and high school graduations and the calendar is just full. But it is a time for us to celebrate our students and a time for us to celebrate the community college as a whole. So if you don't mind, I can read that proclamation, if you would like me to do that.
Please.
Yep. It says, "Community College Month proclamation. Whereas the United States of America is home to more than 1,000 two-year associate degree granting institutions that serve nearly 12 million students. And whereas community colleges are a unique American educational model designed to guarantee access to affordable, high-quality, higher education for all people. And whereas community colleges guarantee fair admissions for all students attending the most demographically and socially, economically diverse students. And whereas without community colleges, many American students would not be able to access higher education. And whereas North Carolina's great 58 community colleges provide opportunities for, for more than 575,000 students annually. And whereas Wayne County's own Wayne Community College, which regularly proves itself to be the best of the 58, improves the lives of students with education and training, helps businesses and industries stay current and grow, offers community members cultural experiences and serves as a vital center of the community. All efforts designed to meet the diverse needs of the people it serves. And whereas for every dollar that a student invests in their education at Wayne Community College, they receive a return of $5.30 and higher future earnings. Whereas Wayne Community College not only contributes to personal growth, health and success of Wayne County residents, it also adds 114.2 million in income to the county's, excuse me, to the county's economy in fiscal year 2019-20. And whereas the Congress, by the Senate Joint Resolution 158, created National Community College Month to recognize the institution's significant contributions to the strength, vitality and prosperity of our nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare the month of April 2025 as Community College Month in Wayne County, North Carolina, adopted this day, the first day of April 2025, be signed by Barbara Acop, Chair of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, and Carol Brogdon, Cloak to the Board."
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2025 Community College Month proclamation.
Motion, Florida, approve Wayne Community College proclamation.
Dr. Pfeifer?
Yes, sir.
We need to change Wayne Community College to Wayne University. It's growing so, so, you know, so.
It is a beautiful campus and we do offer a lot. I'm excited about the renovations that we're doing. The first floor of Azariah is going to offer some additional space for public safety and the training that is done there. We're expanding, we're adding on to the Pine Building, which is a central allied health building, to be able to put in a classroom-type setting that will hold up to 121 chairs. We currently bring in 58 students into our nursing program. Our hope is, once we get that built, we can start building that to at least 78 students on an annual basis. And you would say, well, why not 121 as it will see? Partly because it requires a lot of clinical for that program and extra instructors will go there. So we have to bring it on in increments to be able to do that. But I'm excited about that opportunity. We did know that the hospital is beginning to hire LPNs again or started to do that. So this year, for the first time, we brought in 28 students. We typically has always, as long as I can remember, brought in 20 LPN or licensed practical nursing students. So we increased that with a partnership with the hospital to allow us to bring in 28 students. So we're always looking at what the community needs are and how we as an institution can meet those community needs.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you for what you do.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Let me, let me roll my paparazzi. This is Billma. Billma is part of our Office of Communications staff and she wanted to come get some photos, but she does a wonderful job because a lot of what you see on. but she does a wonderful job, because a lot of what you see on social media is because of what Ms. Enigues does, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four is a presentation by Dr. Sandra Coley on blanket donations for kidney patients. We invite her up to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am happy to be here this morning.
Another year.
Another year. It's been a while. I love those green cups. I have something for you as well on this morning. In previous years, I would come before you with a proclamation. I'm not doing a proclamation this year. This year, I'm coming strictly as an advocate. We've got a lot of things going on right now, so we're not quite ready for the proclamation. As you know, each year, I do a blanket drive to help our residents who are on the dialysis, goes through dialysis for the kidneys. It's real cold when they go through the treatment. They have to turn the thermostat down, way down, and the patients are cold. And what has happened over the years, the dialysis centers cannot keep up with blankets. They were having to get towels, and the patients were wrapping towels, and we all know that does not work. They're too small. Those who are in facilities, nursing homes, would bring a blanket with them, and has gotten to now, facilities do not have blankets that they can give their residents. So, each year, we do a blanket drive. On last year, with the help of our fantastic Wayne County Commissioners, who made a donation, and they were able to fill half of a six-foot table. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We were able to serve six dialysis centers in Wayne County, and each center were given 50-plus blankets, and that was a blessing. The regional manager for this area, which includes Green, Wayne, Lenore, and parts of Sampson, did email me, thanked me for the blankets, and they were very appreciative. And so, I've stepped out, and I'll be serving Wayne and Lenore this year on a smaller scale. So, I want to thank you for being the first to support this, and it has been some years. And I've talked to other counties across North Carolina, and I'm just cheerleading Wayne County for helping with this effort. Regardless of what happens, what goes on, those patients have got to be served, and they're going to be served. And these blankets help the centers, because they don't have to pull out a lot of money to buy blankets. They weren't able to do that, which is why we stepped in with the blanket drive. And so, we'll be going statewide. Hopefully, within five years, I can blanket the state of North Carolina. But right now, we're sticking with eastern North Carolina. We will be having our annual program this year, April 17th, at 6 o'clock at the Wayne County Library. I am going to be at the library at 5 o'clock in the parking lot, on the far end of the library, collecting blankets. But at 6 o'clock, we will be doing our annual service program, and we'll be talking about kidney, kidney failure, which is my advocacy work, you know, we need kidneys. But the good thing is with medicine the way it is, a lot of those patients are living longer, healthier lives, and thanks to the blanket drive, the process of their treatment is comfortable, okay? And I have a gift for you that I'll be sharing with Ms. Carol. She'll get it to you. And again, thank you for all that you do for the blanket drive. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Dr. Coley, where, which library? Because, you know, we're growing our libraries here in Wayne County.
Yes, we are. Wayne County on Ash Street.
Okay.
On Ash Street. But no, we cover the entire county. It's just that that library is centrally located for everybody.
Madam Chair, we want, we want to thank our staff for stepping in and making sure this organization's supported, so we, that's, that's, they take the praise on that.
Yes. Carol's been wonderful over the years.
That was the 16th, right?
Um, April 17th.
17th.
5:00 PM.
Six.
6:00 PM.
I'll be there at 5:00. You can come at 5:00 and bring your blankets. But the actual program starts at 6:00. We've got a really good speaker. She's with Carolina Donor Services, which is now Honor Bridges, and they cover transplantation for all organs, okay?
What size of blankets are you talking about?
Twin size.
Twin size.
Brand-new twin-size blankets. Make sure they're still in the pack with the tags on them. I can't take them if they're not. Or the throws. You all are familiar with the throws, the larger ones. They're really good, too. Don't forget about the kids. If you come across a blanket or a throw that you want to get with a cartoon or Superman, because we do have children receiving dialysis treatments, okay?
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to number six, a motion to approve the 2025 reentry second chance month proclamation is presented by Michelle Bass.
Good morning. How is everyone?
Good morning.
We have some buttons for everyone. I'm going to leave one here for us. Thank you for this opportunity to read this proclamation to you this morning. It reads, "2025 Reentry Second Chance Month Proclamation. Whereas 70 million Americans have a criminal record of some kind, and whereas 600,000 are released from federal and state prisons each year, and whereas promoting the rehabilitation and reintegration of individuals into society with the future is an important goal for all communities, and whereas policies that limit a second chance are detrimental to opportunities related to employment with local governments, state governments, the federal government, and private companies. And whereas engaging the private sector and honoring champions of change are important tools, along with proper education in reducing recidivism, and whereas the county of Wayne continues to partner with the Wayne County Reentry Council, Wayne Community College, local industries, and all units of government to promote reentry efforts for motivated individuals to compete for jobs, attain stable housing, support their families, and contribute to their communities. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April as reentry second chance month in Wayne County, North Carolina, and encourages residents to observe this month and recognize the efforts of those who work to improve the rehabilitation and reintegration of formerly incarcerated individuals. This the first day of April 2025."
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025 reentry second chance month proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you all so much.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, item number seven is a motion to approve the 2025 National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is presented by 911 Director Chris Barnes.
Chris?
Morning, Commissioners. A little jealous that I don't have paparazzi over here. But thank you very much. And you got a button, too. Thank you very much for the opportunity to read this proclamation. This is easily one of my most favorite things that you guys do as a board. You know, the telecommunicators within the 911 center are rarely seen, always heard, so for an opportunity to publicly recognize them is most appreciated. So, without further ado, the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is April 13th through the 19th of 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Wayne County 911 Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators of Wayne County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 13th through 19th 2025 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this the first day of April.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the resolution designating... Hold on a second. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week of April 13th through the 19th of 25.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment before we vote.
Okay.
As Chris said, our call-takers and dispatchers, they're all in the same room. They work together, but they're, they're unsung heroes, because they are the first one on the scene. They're not physically there, but, you know, a big part of their calls are just routine calls, but we've had call-takers to deliver babies over the, over their phone.
It's one of our favorites.
And, I mean, they, they don't get the credit that they deserve, because they're in a secure building, you can't get to them, and, but they, they deserve a whole lot more credit than what we give them sometimes. And, some of the calls can be very disturbing to them. I mean, some, you know, our call-takers and dispatchers are human just like the rest of us, and sometimes, you know, you get a call involving a child or elderly person, they do everything they can, but in the back of their mind, they know that it's just not going to work. But they, it's a very stressful job, and we're always hiring.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Chris, how many calls approximately do you get a day?
About 600 a day.
About 600?
Yes, ma'am.
About how many operators do you have operating in that county?
So, we staff six telecommunicators, and we have a call-taker that works 10 to 10. But we are struggling right now. Like Mr. Wayne said, it is a difficult position. Not everybody is cut out for it, and sometimes the stress can be a lot, so.
Do you have a longevity? Most of the jobs have, about how long?
So, when I first started in this business...
Due to stress, you know?
About 20 years ago, they said our typical telecommunicator got about two good years before they are feeling a little bit burned out. And we've tried to extend that as much as we can, but it, it's, it's difficult.
Thank you. All y'all do, please, extend that thanks to everybody that works there.
Absolutely. Proud to. Thank you.
Did you get your goods up?
Yeah, you have a motion. We have a motion.
I think we've already voted.
Did they vote?
All righty, we'll move on to number eight. It's a motion to approve the 2025 National County Government Month Proclamation is presented by HR Director Sarah Larson.
Good morning.
I am excited to do this today. We have so many wonderful programs and so many wonderful staff that support everything that happens in Wayne County. And in a time where I feel like you turn on the TV and the only thing that you see is that your government employees aren't working as hard as they should be, I can tell you that in Wayne County, that is not true. It's my honor to stand before you today to recognize National County Government Month. It's a time to highlight the vital work that county governments do to serve our communities. Here in Wayne County, our employees are the heart of that service. Every day, they work to support the programs and services that make a real difference in the lives of our citizens. It's evident in our public safety and infrastructure, as well as in health services, community programs. Their dedication ensures that our county remains strong, resilient, and moving forward. This proclamation is a tribute to the tireless efforts, unwavering commitment, and lasting impact. It is also a reminder of the essential role county governments play in shaping the quality of life for its residents. With that, I am proud to present the 2025 National County Government Month Proclamation for Wayne County on your behalf. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 330 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives, and whereas counties, as intergovernmental partners, enact local, state, and federal programs to address the need of all residents, and whereas Wayne County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-efficient, cost-effective ways, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and whereas Wayne County employees provide valuable services which improve the quality of life for the citizens of Wayne County. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month in Wayne County.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the 2025 National County Government Month Proclamation.
Okay, ma'am. Can I ask you a question, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
HR Director Sarah. While you're there, I just want you to touch bases. I know our summer employment program applications start today, and if you can kind of elaborate a little bit on the program, it'd be super. We want the kids to definitely come out.
Yes. So, we are going to start very soon, the application process. We actually have, I think it's tomorrow night, at the community college, we have a parental, a meeting for parents to come in and talk about what they can expect, just so that they're more clear on exactly what is happening in the program, what they can expect as far as schedules, payment, what they will be doing. It's very important that young people get involved in local government and understand that it is an option. There are a lot of people that don't realize, from an employment perspective, that that's an option for them to go into. And I think our health director just recently said that, you know, she was involved in going to some colleges to talk to ultrasound techs, who didn't even realize that that was a possibility to work in local government as an ultrasound tech. So, getting the word out there and being proactive in our communities with youth is very important.
And what time is the meeting going to be tomorrow?
I believe it's at 6:00 PM tomorrow.
6:00 PM.
Yes.
Is it at the community college?
It's at the library. It's at the library.
At the library?
Yes.
On Ash?
Yeah, on Ash.
Okay.
The library at the community college.
On Ash.
The library on Ash, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. All righty, moving on to number nine. It's a motion to approve the 2025 Month of the Military Child Proclamation is presented by Heather Winstead.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us join you this morning. I'm Heather Winstead. I'm the district military liaison with Wayne County Public Schools.
Good morning. I'm Kristy Barnes-Williams. I'm the school liaison at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base.
The Month of the Military Child Proclamation 2025. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in our country's armed forces, in active-duty posts, and around the world, and...
Whereas nearly 2 million children have at least one parent currently serving active Whereas nearly two million children have at least one parent currently serving active military duty, and?
Whereas Wayne County Public Schools has approximately two thousand military-connected students, or over eleven percent of its student population, who are children of active duty, reserves, retired veterans, and?
Whereas the U.S. Department of Defense celebrates the month of April as Month of the Military Child, further highlighting the important role military children play in the armed forces community, and?
Whereas the children of our service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents and make significant contributions to family, schools, and our community, the state, and the nation, despite repeated and prolonged absences of one or both of their parents, and?
Whereas parents served in the military, their kids serve too. And it is fitting for our county, for our country, to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops.
Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Wayne County, do hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-five as the Month of Military Child, and April eleventh as Purple Up Day for Wayne County Public Schools. We encourage all school personnel and Wayne County residents to recognize the contributions of our military families and celebrate the spirit of military children across our district and nation by wearing purple on April eleventh as an outward symbol of our appreciation to our youngest heroes. Dated this day, the first of April in the year of two thousand and twenty-five.
Madam Chair. I would like to make the motion that we approve the two thousand and twenty-five Month of the Military Child proclamation, please.
I will see if I can find my purple dress.
I love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I asked to be excused for a few minutes. I got to go dig up some ice cream for this girlie. I don't leave this girlie retiring again, so I'll be back in a few minutes.
Alright, moving on to number ten is a presentation on our medical plan performance and an update by Mark Browder.
Good morning. I've got a presentation, I think, that should be loaded. Alright, thank you so much for having me. Normally, I've been here once, I think, when things were great. Normally, your staff invites me when things need addressing, so as per normal, we're going to talk about some things that need addressing. But to start off with, I want to talk about the EMS conversation and the mental health side. We have another county customer that's doing, actually has onsite mental health services for first responders and county staff. So I will talk to your team about that as a potential opportunity to improve delivery of mental health services to your first responders, and they absolutely have a very difficult job. Next slide, please. So for those of you who aren't familiar with us, Mark III, we're a family business, been around fifty years, so we focus almost exclusively in the public sector and have a significant presence in the public sector, delivering best-in-class services to our customers, including Wayne County. Just to give you a brief overview, this has been a difficult year in funding for health plans. If you're not familiar, the League of Municipalities has a pool, or had a pool, that is shutting down. It's a self-funded arrangement. There's about two hundred town, cities, and counties that are in that collaboration. If you remember the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I've been around a long time, you used to have a pool as well. It's shut down, so this is the second one that has had to go out of business. And the groups that are being left to find solutions for health insurance, many of them are seeing increases twenty, thirty, forty, and fifty percent increases in health insurance. And that's primarily because it was not funded to the level that it needed to be, so it's a very difficult environment in health insurance. Most of our current self-funded clients, like y'all, are actually have been in a really good place. The renewals have been in the mid-single-digit range, and of course, it varies group by group based on your claims, north or south of that range. Next slide. And just one more little, just commercial about Mark III. We're constantly evaluated, both by existing clients and new prospects. This year, new customers to Mark III are Guilford County, Chatham County, the city of Wilmington, are all new clients. We're extraordinarily competitive, work very hard to serve our customers, and even our some existing customers have done due diligence on Mark III, of which we've survived all of those, thrived in all of those. So we've been working with you for north of a decade, working through challenges, implementing great strategies, and had a lot of success for your employees. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, you are a self-funded health plan. So what that means is you hire an administrator, that's Blue Cross, to administer your plan. You also hire a pharmacy benefit manager, which is Prime, which is part of Blue Cross, and then you purchase risk insurance or stop-loss insurance to protect against high claimants. The net fixed cost of running your plan is only six point six percent, which means essentially ninety-three percent of your cost is claims-driven, claims-driven by your membership, employees, spouses, children, and retirees. Self-funding is by far the most efficient way to manage a health plan. It allows you to gain the greatest cost efficiencies, deliver the most benefits, and the best services at the lowest cost possible. The county has been extremely successful in this environment. I've obviously been here before to address challenges, but in fixing those challenges, the plan has been extremely stable for the last five years. But you are a self-funded pool, or question, self-funded plan, and you have to fund your plan. If you don't, you will get behind, the county will still pay the bills, but you have to make sure that you're keeping up with the funding needs. Next slide, please. So the plan has performed very well for the last five years. Your average claim increase has only been about four percent per year since nineteen. Net plan expenses are only up two point eight percent. However, in the last twelve months, there has been an acceleration of claims driven by cancer, especially pharmacy, heart disease, and musculoskeletal challenges. Your claims are half of normal trend. Normal trend is about eight percent. You've also innovated. Your staff has worked extremely hard to help improve the health of the at-risk population by implementing a diabetes strategy and a medical weight loss strategy. Plus, you're part of a larger block of business that we have with Blue Cross, approximately twenty-eight thousand members, that allows you to gain national account contract terms that are absolutely best-in-class, and those contract terms have actually helped keep the plan in a positive position. Next slide. So when I was here before, we did a bid for the two thousand and twenty-one plan year. It was a challenging year. We saw a mid-teens increase in funding that was needed. We got the responses back, next slide. And then we went through the current benefits, which was about a sixteen and a half percent increase, looked at various options, looked at all the vendors that were available. Blue Cross was the most competitive solution, next slide. And we landed on some benefit changes, along with some contract changes. Inevitably, I always get the question, wouldn't we be better off being fully insured? Let somebody else take the risk, get risk off. And for that RFP, we also got a fully insured quote from Blue Cross, which was twenty-four percent increase, fully eight points higher. Why is that? Because they've got expenses, they're holding on to pharmacy considerations, they've got premium tax, they've got margin that's loaded all in there. You're never going to find a more efficient solution than being self-funded. Next slide. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we spun up the Intergovernmental Healthcare Alliance. IHA is a loose collaboration. It's not, you're not formally tied for claims with any of the participants, but what you are benefiting from is the national account contract terms that every member benefits from, which includes administration, pharmacy, and risk insurance called stop-loss. Next slide. One of the unique natures or aspects of this contract is a stop-loss block that's incorporated into this. This is the largest block of stop-loss business that Blue Cross has. We are an independent, we work with Cigna, at United, and other vendors. We're not a only Blue Cross shop, but for many of our customers who have Blue Cross, taking advantage of that leverage is important. So this stop-loss block is the most important block at Blue Cross across the country. So if you could back up just one, yeah. So the unique nature of this is there's no ability to create a higher pooling level for a significant claimant that has happened here in the past for Wayne County. And then there's distributions back to the membership in two thousand, for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three reconciliation, it was about two point seven million. For the most recent reconciliation, it's about four point four million. That is coming back to the groups. It actually takes the stop-loss premium net negative across the block. Next slide. So these are the participants, including Wayne County. Again, twenty-eight thousand members in this block, twenty-three percent of Blue Cross's total public sector book, the largest block that Blue Cross has in the public sector. So you are important to them. Next slide. Some of the reconciliation, I mentioned two thousand and twenty-three, about two point seven million distributed to the participants. It was on a pro-rata basis, based on performance. You got about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of that distribution. Next slide. In the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four reconciliation that was just completed, you got about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. All of that helping to offset cost. And in any other stop-loss arrangement, you would have never seen that money. This is a extremely unique stop-loss block and strategy for distribution when it's positive. And the membership, if you don't end up with a distribution, it means you probably needed a significant increase. You're protected by the block, so all of y'all are working together, and the average increase, without taking the distribution into consideration, is only seven and a half percent, which is fully half of normal stop-loss leverage trend. Next slide. Lot of numbers, there's really just a couple of stories on this. First of all, in that red circle you're going to see in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, there was no rebate or pharmacy considerations that the county was getting. You had a very low admin fee, but we're getting none of the economic value of the pharmacy contract. It looked like when we raised the admin to get the rebate considerations, that potentially that was a net negative. What you're going to find is your net cost for administering the plan, including insuring the plan through stop-loss, is significantly lower than it was five years ago. Next slide. So two years, fast forward. In the green circles, you're going to see that distribution of about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars coming out of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three distribution. Then you're also going to see seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which are rebate payments that were negotiated through IHA for the membership. That's fully a million dollars worth of credits that you got in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four plan year, which actually kept the plan positive, because if you hadn't had those, you would have been underwater about four hundred grand. Next slide. And the other thing on that, the plan started to trend higher at the back half of two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four as well, is some of the high claimant traffic we're talking about. In the current year, again, we're still seeing a surge in high claimant traffic, musculoskeletal, cancer, especially pharmacy spend. It's your membership incurring the claims. I would pose to you that you are doing a lot to help the health of your membership, but this does happen. And if you look at a five-year timeframe, typically every group that we work with is going to have a bad year. No, it's alright, it's all good. So just in the current year, in the blue circle, you're going to see already, when you take the distribution from the stop-loss contract and the rebate payments, you're fully a million dollars to the good already. You're probably going to be north of a million, two to three for the current year. That is fully keeping the plan in a positive position. So all of these negotiations through this IHA contracting strategy is helping to keep the plan stable. Next slide. Not disclosing the condition, but within this, these are individuals within your plan. So fully nine people have over a hundred thousand dollars of claims each, which could be cancer, specialty pharmacy spend, musculoskeletal, heart disease, all of those are in this population. And to the people that typically don't see this, it sort of takes your breath away at how big some of these claims are, and a four hundred thousand dollar claim is actually not a really big deal. It's not. We've got clients who have claims that are at one point two million dollars for one person. And there's just tremendous cost in the system. Next slide. So again, my slides are busy because they're technical, but what this is illustrating in the blue circle is that if you look at your fixed costs, net fixed cost in two thousand and twenty-two, question, twenty-two, twenty-three, before we transitioned to the IHA contract terms, it was about one point two million dollars. For the current renewal cycle, it's about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of net fixed cost, fully a half a million dollar reduction in fixed cost for the plan, which is how we've been able to keep the plan in a positive position. But ultimately, it is your claims, the claims of your people, that drive what the funding has to be. So it's been a great story of management, it's been a great story of protection and risk, and extracting as much value out of the contract terms as possible, but ultimately we have to keep up with the funding. Next slide. So in the current year, we need an increase in funding of about nine percent. And if you think about the fundings we've done over the last four years, five years, this is on the high side, but on average, it's been extremely nominal in funding. It is a self-funded plan, as I've sort of alluded to you, the League of Municipalities, if you don't keep up, you will end up in an economic challenge. Ultimately, whether you fund the increase or not, you're going to pay the bill, because it is self-funded, the risk is on the county. So I would put to you, this is something that needs to occur. We don't need to end up in a situation like we were five years ago, where it's a double-digit increase. And while nine percent feels like it's a challenge relative to what we're experiencing in the market, it's a really good renewal, it just doesn't feel like it when you're funding it. But if you look at thirties and forties, this is a great renewal. Next slide. Just as a reminder, the team, all of us, HR, management, Mark III, and external parties have been working very diligently to help improve the health of the at-risk population. Next slide. So we've implemented a diabetes program that's been extremely successful. Members who engage get their diabetic medications for free, but they're also learning, being managed, and they always have a lower claims profile over time than the unmanaged population. I also personally took a call from a deputy probably three or four years ago, and he was bemoaning something within the plan, and I said, are you taking insulin or injectables for diabetes? He said he was. I said, are you participating in the diabetes program? He said, no, I'm not. I said, if you join up in the diabetes program and engage, you can get your medications for free, which he did. Next slide. Weight loss strategy that we used, there has been a ton of conversation about weight loss medications, right? You see it in the market, Wegovy, Zepbound, off-label use of Ozempic and Monjerno. What we have deployed here at Wayne County is a strategic entry into using the medications in conjunction with coaching, engagement, improvement, to let those medications help people who, it's not required, but let them use those medications to get them a jumpstart, help them get to a better place as part of a global strategy to improve their education and overall health, and it's been extremely successful. Next slide. It is extremely intensive, there's four quarterly visits with a clinical pharmacist, there's virtual support, there's weekly check-ins, which is really a diary system, there's digital scales. I don't know about you, but I'm not interested in stepping on a set of digital scales so somebody can see my weight. I did talk to an HR professional, and she said it's no problem, because she's got off-the-book scales that she steps on during the week to see how she's doing, and then at the end of the week, she steps on her on-the-books digital scales. But it is a great accountability tool that people that participate in this really embrace, and they really appreciate the support. Next slide. And this is a quote from one of your employees that's in the medical weight management strategy. Lost fifty-six pounds. Meeting with that care manager helped to keep them, as I said earlier, accountable, helped them stay on the path. The learning process. Listen, none of us get anywhere by ourselves in a successful method. We need help. I'm at the age now that I, the women around me, I've seen them grow older as I've grown older, and menopause has struck. They didn't change their diet, they didn't change their exercise strategy, but their hormones have definitely changed, and the weight has come on. One of those is my spouse, so I live it. These strategies help people that who haven't even changed a thing, but over time... But over time, Mother Nature does change, and it does change their metabolism. But these types of programs are extremely important in them being successful and their gratitude for these programs. We have clients that have employees that are thinking about moving on to the neighboring county. In their questions, if they're participating in this, they're asking that future employer, do they have this kind of program? And many of them do not. So it is a retention tool for our customers in a very competitive environment for qualified staff. Next slide. Just last thing, HSA limits or deductibles are rising, and that's IRS limits. And I think that's the last thing. Questions? I sort of bombarded you with information.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's rare that you see a program that you, you as an individual was involved with and launching. And I know there was a lot of pushback and concern about bringing Mark III on 11 years ago. Long time. But wow, what a success.
Thank you.
What a success. And that speaks highly for Wayne County because not only did we bring in Mark III to actually help us manage our self-insurance plan, but we also have financial advisors that advise us in regards to our borrowing and so forth. So it always keeps Wayne County in a very, a very good financial shape. And looking at this, I know that people know me. Sometimes I push back on things. And I was concerned about some of the programs that will be brought in and that extra cost as such. But it's been worth every bit of it. It really has. It offered additional benefits to our workers, to our employees, but at the same time, it held down our cost as well. So great job.
Great. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. All righty, moving on to Appointment Committee.
Item number 11, a motion to appoint Ruth Facen to the Appointment Committee.
Madam Chair, the Appointment Committee is making a recommendation and a motion to appoint Ruth Facen to the Wayne County Council on Aging. And Madam Chair, we also make a motion to appoint Richard Proctor to the Wayne County Planning Board, replacing Johnny Bryant. And that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for those. We'd be looking for our approvals of our consent agenda.
Aye, aye.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
All right, thank you for that. On to new business. Item number 22 now is motion to award a child support enforcement contract to Veritas HHS for three years, beginning July 1, 2025, subject to the county attorney's approval.
So just a couple of things. I think I kind of put it in the amendment that I submitted. In the memo that I submitted. So Veritas has been with us three and a half years now. For those who was on the board at the time that we were doing it, we were at, I think, 98 in the, 91 in the state as far as the ranking in when it comes to the different stats that they were supposed to be able to complete. Currently, right now, they're at 78. If you were on the DSS board at the time, you would know some of the challenges that we had. So with them coming in now, I see where there's been an increase in the different things that they've been able to implement, and it kind of shows in the numbers as well. On your memo, you see the difference or you see what they're proposing when it comes to the contract for the next three years. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or any thought process to it.
Madam Chair, and maybe this is a question for Andrew. Do we have any goals established in this contract that they move them, Wayne County, from level 78 up to a certain ranking?
There's no contractual incentives or anything like that, no. The costs are fixed.
Because that was one of our main concerns, and that was that we're ranked 91. And it's good to see improvement. But I feel like that we need to try to establish some level of improvement over the next three years.
I will say, and your director could probably speak a little bit. I think the first year was more them getting used to what the situation was. So.
I know that was an adjustment.
There was, and I don't think they were fully aware of the situation they were getting into.
Right.
So I would think that those numbers would improve greatly, continue to improve, given that they know what the situation is.
Could we at least put in a recommended benchmark of some type? And I'll leave that to you all to arrive at that. But I just think that we need to establish what our expectations are over the next three years. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the costs associated with the contract don't include any IT, any infrastructure, anything like that. We would just be giving them space, and they would be housed at the new Parker Building when that opens. They're probably going to be the last people to get over there. But so there's no cost associated with to the county.
And these fees are similar to what we're currently paying?
It's an increase.
Sure.
But as we discussed when we were looking over all the proposals, the previous costs were based off of the salaries we were paying child support at the time. We've gone through probably two pay studies since then. So all of our employees are making significantly higher than what, you know, the Veritas was paying them. So it's, I mean, it's not a shock to see that the cost went up just because salaries across the board have gone up. So put it this way, if we were to bring this back into child support, our costs would dramatically increase more so than this contract.
Madam Chair, is this a renewal? Because it says they started March 1 of 2022. Three-year renewal.
It'd be a three-year contract. We only received two bids this time, or proposals this time, one of which also bid on the last one as well. But pretty much, and there's really only two vendors that specialize in this type of collection.
My only experience that I think they've resolved, because I've not heard it anymore in regards to complaint, but there was a complaint in regards to communication where a person that was paying child support actually made the payment. Of course, they always wait till the last minute. But in regards to them, after the payment was made, they, a order of arrest was issued, even with the payment being made. So hopefully, that communication has been resolved.
And when we spoke about that, I think there was that communication issue. I think there was an identified person, and then it kind of, there was somebody else that they had to send the email to. So I think all that has been resolved, because I haven't heard anything.
Well, I hadn't heard any more from it, so I assume it's been resolved. Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just need a motion to approve it.
Madam Chair, we made the motion to approve it.
All righty, and we move on to public comments. No one signed up for public comments. Wow. I don't believe it.
I don't know why, none or no.
Okay, no public comment period. County managers' report, I'll pass today so we can move along. But we'll go ahead to Board of Commissioners Committee reports.
Commissioner.
Thank you. First off, I want to wish a happy, happy birthday to my mom. She's celebrating another birthday. And also my niece, they were born on the same day. So Leylani, happy birthday to you. Want to also reiterate the summer employment program, which this board supported. It is amazing. I got a chance to talk to some of the kids that were part of the program. A lot of them are graduating college now. So not only does this program help keep the kids safe during the summer and put some money in their pocket, it also has gotten to the point where kids want to get educated. And also, the county has hired some. So we want to keep this program going. Tomorrow, April 2, at the Wayne County Public Library on Ash Street at 6:00 PM, the parents will be able to come in and see a little bit more and learn a little bit more about the program. So make sure you come out. And I got also an opportunity to attend the Legislative Conference for County Commissioners in Washington a few weeks ago. And that's all I have. Thank you.
One question for you, Commissioner Williams. Some of the kids, did they use this summer program as part of their application into college?
They did. And some even asked me if I could, you know, write a nice letter to them, you know, to the college so they can get accepted. We have one young lady, her name is Laheesa. She's graduating from North Carolina State. And so just a lot of great, great kids. Hunter, I don't know if you remember Hunter. He worked with Kendall, and he is actually going to college in Charlotte right now. And just doing a great job. And a lot of these kids were very quiet. They didn't want to talk. Now they're just getting outgoing. So it's just a good program. It really is. Proud of it. I thank the board for supporting it.
Mr. Dr.
No, we thank you for bringing that idea to us.
That was a great idea.
It was a great idea. It's just really been phenomenal, really. So thank you. Other than that, I have no other comments, other than today is April Fool's Day. Hopefully, there are no April Fools' Month. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Akka.
I don't really have anything other than a question for Mr. Neal. We are going back in closed session.
We are.
Would it be appropriate for me to bring something up in closed session?
I can talk to you about it and see if it would be appropriate.
That's it.
Mr. Foster.
No comment.
No comment, Madam Chair.
I will go with Ketchum Bridge.
That was a quick round trip. She has got some Indian blood there, and I've been on to receiving into warpath. I could get her some ice cream for her students. Apologize for that relief. We'd have got it earlier, but one of our commercial freezers went out Sunday. So we didn't have enough freezer space. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
All righty. Madam Chair, I think we go back in closed session.
For the same reasons as before.
Go back in closed session for the same reason as mentioned before.
I need to go down and talk to you now.
Is it about the fire?
Hold on, we're not, we haven't completely finished our, like...
Yes.
Make sure we're seated.
Is it about the ears?
We are out closed session back in regular session.
I like a motion we adjourn.
We have most, we got a motion to adjourn. Let's adjourn. Thank you guys.